This meeting was originally held on September 6, 2023. However, due to the City Hall being, due to the City Hall not fully being accessible to the public, the Committee of the Whole meeting would be held again. The City Council, the Committee of the Whole will meet in person on Thursday, September 14, 2023, at 6:15 for the purpose of discussing the resolution to authorize the tax increment finance, a TIF agreement with Crowley Wind Services and an order for the City of Salem to facilitate the construction and operation of the offshore wind marshalling port at 67 Derby Street with Crowley Wind Services in the Massachusetts Clean Energy Council. This meeting will be held in City Council chambers at 93 Washington Street, Salem, Mass, on the second floor. If you are trying to join via Zoom, you can click the link and enter the password 771180, or by telephone, you can join with 877-853-5257. Below on the city's website, there is a recording of the previous meeting that was held on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, and please note, all the backup documentation will be contained to council orders in presentation given this evening. In person shall be the primary method of public access to such meetings. The secondary method of public access may be provided if technologically feasible through Salem Access Television and remotely through Zoom. See below for the remote access and SAT information. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for the effect of communications, such as a sign language interpreter and assistance listening device, or print material in digital format, or a reasonable modification of program services, policies, and activities, may contact the City of Salem's ADA Coordinator as soon as possible, no less than two days prior before the event. Agenda of the resolution to authorize a tax agreement finance, a TIF agreement with Crowley Wind Services, and an order to the City of Salem to facilitate the construction and operations of the wind offshore marshalling port, 67 Derby Street with Crowley Wind Services and the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. The City Council Committee of the Whole, the City Council, Council Chambers met, the City of the Committee of the Whole met in Council Chambers on September 14, 2023, at 6:15, actually, 6:25. For the purposes of discussing matters listed below, notice this meeting was posted on September 12 at 1:03 PM. All members of the Council are here. Tonight, we have two matters in front of us. Matter number 409, which is a resolution to authorize and the tax increment finance agreement with us this evening. We have Tom Daniels, Anna Friedman, and Beth Bernard, and, oh, Stephen Cortez is here from the assessor's office as well. Briefly, we're redoing this meeting because it was brought to our attention that somehow inadvertently, prior to the meeting we held last week, for a period of approximately what can be determined as 10 minutes, the door downstairs was inadvertently locked, and therefore, we felt our due diligence that we shall rehold this meeting to make sure that anyone who may have shown up and turned themselves away has the opportunity to come back. We can also retouch on what we talked about last week very briefly. With that, we have Tom Daniels, and I know Tom has brought a new version of the agreement, which everyone has in front of them, which is listed as draft, which is a red-strike-through version, which has, if, Tom, if you want to come up and talk about this, the table, which I see in red, has somehow been amended a little bit or been cleaned up. So it's, and there's a couple instances throughout the document where there's a couple of strike-through red versions, so if you want to just touch on it briefly, so when we take the revote, we make sure we're voting on the correct matter?
Sure, happy to do that. So the amended TIF agreement, the first thing was a typo, the word "assess" becomes "assessed." You'll see that on the second page. The schedule, that was included in the memo, but wasn't, you know, in this TIF agreement, that hasn't changed. The third is the addition of the words "and approval by the EACC," that's at the bottom of page two. I have this on a slide if you'd, I'm sorry, that's section five, paragraph five. I can put it up on the screen if you'd like. Would that be easier?
That would be helpful.
Okay, can you make me a panelist if you could promote me?
No. Yeah. It's all coming back. How's that?
It's coming, we're getting there.
Watch this. Whoosh!
There we go. All right. Let me share this.
And as you're pulling this up, Tom, so basically, nothing substantially changed from what we talked about the other day, other than just making sure that the table is in the document that we're approving, as opposed to in a memo, even though we all had it in front of us, and in some cases, just a few, in some cases, just a couple of words, in other cases, just a sentence.
Yeah, just to explain again, so the TIF is an agreement with, it's negotiated by the city with Crowley, but this is a state program, so the state's council from Mass Office of Business Development reviews it, just to make sure that it's statutory compliant. So here we are on page two. That first, under paragraph A1, you can see the correction from the word "assessed" to "assessed." The second point is the table, which, as Council McCarthy stated, was the schedule you saw previously, it's just now in the agreement. The third change is paragraph number five at the bottom, just, this was the provision where the city and Crowley agree to meet in years nine and 14, and this is just noting that in addition to, you know, the mayor and this body needing to approve any future change, the EACC also needs to approve that. That's the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. On the next page, that same change is under paragraph B6. It's the same provision, it's just this is Crowley's obligation to meet. The first one was our obligation to meet with them. And then on the next page, under letter C1, this is clarifying that the Massachusetts Clean Energy Council or Center is exempt from taxation under Mass General Law, and so that this provision is clarifying their role. That's the only change, the last page is the signature page. And I'm able to run through all the slides on this, just so folks have that information. I'll go back to the top here of the presentation that you saw last week.
If I could, real quick?
Yeah.
Do we have, yes, I know, do we have to adopt the changes as amended? So approve it as amended, or adopt the changes now? Or either way? Okay, at the end, okay.
Okay.
Because the amendment, the strike-through version wasn't in front of us the last time, so we have to adopt what's in front of us now, so I was just, I want to make sure we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's.
Sure.
Gotcha.
I get that.
Yep.
And I'm trying to mute here so I don't get feedback. Okay, so just to set the context again, so we had the benefit of the full presentation. This project is, you know, clearly important to the city, but it also is supporting national and state goals as well in terms of clean energy generation. It was really the Bidens administration's statement of the goal of 30 gigawatts of offshore wind power by 2030 that made this project, you know, a potential reality for the city. The state has its goal of 10 gigawatts by 2035, and then locally, we have our own goals through RISLian Together in terms of clean energy supply. The project, our key partners with the city are the Mass Clean Energy Commission, Mass CEC, and Crowley. This will result in the second offshore wind marshalling port in Massachusetts to complement New Bedford. It's capable of providing electricity along the eastern seaboard from Virginia to Maine, and we're in a great location, both for projects south of Martha's Vineyard and then for future areas in the Gulf of Maine. So the public sector side, again, we've got all levels of government here, from the federal government on down to the city and the Port Authority. Everybody is a regulator, or the first three parties are regulators, as well as funding partners or financing partners. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts will be a property owner, as will the city, and I'll speak about this later when we get to the real estate section, and then the Port Authority acts as, has oversight in terms of operations and eventually will be a property owner. The private sector side is Crowley. Crowley is our direct partner. Other private parties are important to the project. Those are tenants that are the actual developers of the offshore wind facilities, folks like Avengrid and Orsted, Equinor, whom you may have heard of. Key goals here, again, the clean energy production, that's important, not just for the state, but for the planet. And this world-class port, this third point's really important, that we're actually going to wind up with ownership of the deepwater berth in the five acres. This goes back to the footprint community benefits agreement that was negotiated between the city and Footprint in 2014, so there will be public ownership of that asset. This is really the most important piece of the property. There'll be increase in commercial tax base, addition jobs, between 150 and 200 jobs on the site when it's operating, diversifying the economy here, so also an important thing as we've talked about economic resiliency. This is a whole new industry, not just the port and the operations, but businesses related to those operations and the supply chain. We also will be having a community benefits agreement to address other city goals. Just to recap on what a tax increment financing agreement is, it's a tool that the state provides for municipalities to work with developers to exempt a certain portion of new tax revenue to benefit the project. They're negotiated and approved locally. The state, through the EACC, must also approve them, as I mentioned earlier. TIS go into effect on the first day of July following the project completion and the determination of the full assessed value. So it's executed now, but it takes effect after the project is done, has its certificate occupancy, and goes through the full assessment. This graphic talks about TIFs visually, so I'll just spend a moment on this. So the number one in the graph, that light blue, is the base value. That's something that, in a TIF, the property owner continues to pay taxes on that base value. The assessor makes adjustments to that base value over time, taking into consideration what's happening in the marketplace, independent of any investment. So you see that number two, that baseline growth. So over time, typically, property values increase, so that base value will increase. It will also generate more tax revenue as tax rates tend to increase over time. Number three, the vertical green rectangle is new value that's created by the investment. So, and number four is where we talk about the tax increment financing. There's an exemption of that, a portion of that property tax that's created from the new development. In this project, the base value is being established at $30 million. Again, the assessor will adjust that over time as just natural market forces tend to increase, property values, and the increment is $220 million. And speaking just about that base value, just to give you an insight of what's changed over the past several, past couple of years and is projected, so you can see the base value was 3.6, or the property value of the, in fiscal '22, was 3.6 million. That was adjusted up to 9.35. It was about a year ago when Crowley acquired the property for $30 million, so the current fiscal year, that value's been updated to 25 million and will be 30 million for the base value of the purposes of the TIF. I do want to note that the taxes there that are in the future are projections and are based on last year's tax rate. In terms of this specific tax increment agreement, it's a 20-year term, and it's got a de-escalating exemption schedule, so this is typical in our TIFs, where the front end is loaded with a higher exemption, and then it decreases over time. So the first five years are an exemption of 92.5%. That drops to 65%. Years 11 through 15, it's at 30%, and then the last five years are at 5%. So, you know, you can see it's front-loaded, it is 20 years, but about 97% of the exemption over the 20 years is in the first 15 years. Over the term of the 20 years, about 58% of the taxes or $73 million will be paid, and about 42% or $53 million will be exempted. And as I mentioned, as we were looking through the edits, there are formal check-ins that Crowley and the city have agreed to have in years nine and 14. These are not, excuse me, there's not a binding obligation for any party to make a change, but, you know, there's an understanding that this is a new industry, things may go better than expected, and in that case, the city may be interested in talking with Crowley about changes to the schedule. Conversely, things may not go as well as Crowley hopes, and they may be coming in with a request to make an adjustment. There's nothing binding on any party, we're not able to do that. If there were to be any change in the future, that would require the approval of the mayor of this body, and as noted by the comments, the EACC. The city's obligation under the TIF are to adhere to the schedule and to hold those meetings in years nine and 14. Crowley's obligation is to invest between $250 and $290 million, maintain the port and operate it for offshore wind purposes. They'll be creating eight full-time jobs per this TIF piece, which is what they're required to report onto the state. The project itself will generate 150 to 200 jobs. Crowley can't say today that those jobs will all be Crowley jobs, there are many service providers that provide, Crowley provides a range of services, they have competitors in the market that provide services as well. The analogy I've used before is about the wedding venue, you know, that can provide everything for you, from the caterer to the musician. You know, maybe you don't want to hire the venue's musician and caterer, so that's, the jobs will be there, they just may not all be Crowley jobs. They have, Crowley has committed to hiring demographics that have been traditionally harder to employ or find employment, people with disabilities, people who've experienced homelessness, and members of environmental justice communities, and then Crowley is obligated to meet with the city in years nine, 14. These are the changes that we discussed at the top of this, and so this is just next step. So tonight, this committee will be making a recommendation to the full council. If approved, then tomorrow, my colleague Kate Newell Smith, who I want to acknowledge and thank for her work on this with me, will be working to get the information to the state. The EACC votes next Thursday on this TIF at their regular meeting. And so I can pause to see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Tom, for representing that. Any member of the council have a question? Oh, you can't hear me, sorry. Thank you, Tom, for reintroducing that to us. Is there any member of the council who has a question? Seeing none, is there? Councilor Masol.
Thank you, Chair. Can I offer an amendment, or to accept the amendments?
Sure. Do you want me to open up to the public for us? Is there anybody in attendance that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment? Just go to attendees. I'm looking at the attendees, is anyone online who would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see anyone with their hand up with that. With us this evening, we were presented with an amended version of the agreement, the strike-through version, if you want to call it, so I will entertain a motion. Counselor Masol.
Thank you, Chair. I move to accept the amendments as outlined in the text. In section A1, changing the word to "assessed," adding the table. In section A5, adding the words "and approved by the EACC" to the end of the paragraph. In section B6, adding the words "and approved by the EACC" to the end of that section. And then in section C1, adding that final phrase, "project," in parentheses, other than the CEC, which is exempt from taxation under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 23J, Section 4, end parentheses.
Thank you, Councilor Masol. Councilor Masol moves to accept the document in front of us that's listed as draft, that has in red all the changes that she just referenced.
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Watson. File, anyone else? All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter is now amended in front of us, is that correct, Madam City Clerk? I mean, Madam City Solicitor?
Counselor.
Yep, okay. Counselor Masol.
Thank you, Chair. I move to refer this to the committee as amended with the recommendation for approval, to the council, to the full council, sorry.
Counselor Masol moves to move the amended matter to the full council for its consideration and approval.
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, Tom. Or don't go far.
Yep.
Yep. The next matter in front of us is council order number 410, "In order to facilitate the construction and operation of Salem's offshore wind marshalling port at 67 Derby Street," which is all the legal transactions with regards to property. So if you want to run through that with us, Tom, please.
Sure, happy to do that. So these transactions are all spelled out in a membrane of understanding among the city, Crowley and Mass CEC, that Mayor Driscoll negotiated and executed back in December of '22. It sets the box in terms, and the path for these various transactions that I'll get into, and establishes the key terms in terms of rent and length of lease, its permitted uses. Under Acting Mayor McCarthy and Mayor Pangallo, we've refined things. I do want to pause here, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, about the Salem Harbor Port Authority. So it had always been envisioned that the Salem Harbor Port Authority would own the berth in the five acres, you know, over a year ago, in looking at the enabling legislation for the Port Authority, it limits their geographic jurisdiction to Blaney Street. That wasn't the intention, you know, Counselor McCarthy, like, people who were involved in that at that time, everyone acknowledged that wasn't the intention, but that's what's in the legislation. So we worked last year and were successful in getting language in the, from both the House and Senate, in the Economic Development Bill, but that bill was not adopted at the end. Earlier this year, the Healy-Driscoll administration put the same language in a supplemental budget bill that had been expected to be adopted prior to June 30th. That was not, that bill did not proceed either, and there's a need for this project to move forward. Crowley is needing to get under construction, so because the Port Authority cannot receive this property outside their jurisdictional, limited geographical jurisdiction, the city is taking it on. The intention is to still pursue cleaning up the enabling legislation for the Port Authority, and that at a future point, you know, this land would be conveyed to the Port Authority. The council orders are authorizing the exceptions to the deed for the berth in the five acres, declaring them surplus for the purposes of leasing, and then authorizing the mayor to enter into the lease. What I'll do is just walk through the transactions here, big picture currently, the property, all that in yellow, that's a 42-acre site that's owned by Crowley. They acquired it from Footprint last year for $30 million, as I said earlier. The goal is for the land to all wind up in public ownership, but to have Crowley, the private sector, be responsible for developing the port, operating it, and maintaining it. So just to walk through what these conveniences are doing, just shifting to a plan firm here, so again, Crowley owns the 42 acres. Last Thursday, the property was subdivided, so along the left-hand side there, which is Blaney Street, and at the bottom there, where you can see Salem Harbor, that's the berth. That parcel is now Lot 2B, and Crowley's going to convey all 42 acres, both lot, 2A and 2B, to Mass CEC. Then Mass CEC, and this is a simultaneous transaction, Mass CEC will convey the berth in five acres, which I'm now showing in red, to the city. They will retain ownership of the 37 acres. We will lease the property, the five acres in berth, back to Mass CEC. They will sublease it to Crowley, and they will also lease their 37 acres to Crowley. So again, we're getting it from private land ownership to public land ownership, and putting the responsibility on the private party to build it, to operate and maintain it. Crowley, in their role as operating the port, will enter into leases with offshore developers like Avengrid and Orsted, that I had mentioned earlier. The key terms in the lease to CEC is that the use is limited to offshore wind purposes. This is important, and we remember that the property is part of a designated port area. We went through a harbor planning, a DPA master planning process, looking at community input through those processes. There are many uses that are allowed under a DPA, marine industrial uses, that have significant impacts or could have significant impacts. You know, I referenced salt piles, which the salt can come in over the water, but more often than not, it's going to be leaving in lots of trucks, so we're not interested in truck-heavy traffic coming to the site. One of the beauties of the offshore wind marshalling facility is that the main components are coming in over water, they're being stored, they're being assembled, and they're floating out back over the water. And so we have termination of the lease if the lot is not used for offshore wind purposes. Public access is maintained to the watership and for six large cruise ships, which is a, here I'm saying up to, so it's agreed that there will be at least six, and as operations, if operations allow, there's an opportunity for there to be more than six. The, our property here is allowing the whole wind port to operate on the rest of the site. We negotiated a right of first refusal on the 37 acres that Mass CEC owns, so if at some point in the future they were to seek to sell their property, we would have the ability to acquire it. If not acquiring it, we also negotiated a right for use restriction. So again, for instance, saying whoever owns it cannot use it for storing salt piles, as an example. Our lease is for a term of 99 years with a payment of $1 a year. This is standard with government-to-government land conveniences. The rent that CEC is charging Crowley will be segregated by CEC into a separate account, and that's prioritized for use back in this port, so it's not that they're collecting money here to put in a different facility or a different program, it's to go back into this port. They're responsible for ensuring that the site is maintained in good condition, and also, you know, coordinating with us as we work on other projects, such as a new ferry terminal building and other activities in the port. We're all going to be neighbors, you know, they need to access our land, we're going to need to access them, it's just, you know, a desire to collaborate. Next up on this is, excuse me, the, again, the referral out of tonight's meeting to the full council. We'll be continuing to work this fall in drafting and finalizing the various agreements that are related to these transactions. The local permitting will be completed with the planning board and the Conservation Commission. We'll move on to closings. Crowley will have selected their contractor, they put out their RFP, was it last week? I'm losing track of time. And then they are looking to get underway with construction. Still looking at early '26 for the port to be operational. And I'm happy to take questions.
Once again, thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Is there any questions from any member of the council? You also? Sure. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. I just want to comment that, just for the purpose of the general public to know, this meeting already took place, and the questions that we had already been answered, so make sure that you watch on SATV, and you will see some of the answer, or the question that we made. So the reason why you don't hear no question from us is because the questions have already been made, and we've been briefed by term in many occasions, so we already have the information that we need in order for us to make a decision on how we vote in. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? And I'd also like to recognize Counsel Sergeant, who's joined us this evening, so he's in the room, so I recognize him. Counsel Sergeant, good to see you back in the room. With that, no one in the, let me check participants once again, if I can, attendees. Is there any member of the public? Is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this matter? Please hit the raise your hand button on your device. Seeing no one. Counselor Maslow?
Thank you, Chair. I move to refer this back to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Counselor Maslow moves to send this matter to the full council with a positive recommendation, seconded by Counselor Varela. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 11 to zero. With that, I want to thank everyone, I want to thank, once again, thank you, Tom.
Sure.
And thank you, Anna. Stephen already left, and thank you, Beth. Thank you for your participation in revisiting this matter. Counsel Varela?
Like the motion to adjourn.
Counsel Varela moves to adjourn at 6:54. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? We stand up and adjourn. Thank you.